The life's call is regular city council meeting is January seventeenth to order. Please call the board.
Goose?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Flora?
Virgil.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's stand for the pleasure of speakers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public hearing ordinance number nineteen eighteen eighty-seven, increase in wastewater rate. Is anybody here to speak to that tonight? Anybody to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that, move on to the next one. Public hearing on ordinance number nineteen one eighty-eight, increasing electrical rates. Anybody here to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that. Public hearing on ordinance number nineteen eighteen eighty-nine, increased water rates. Anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, we'll close those and we'll come on into communications. We have a number of items laid on the table just for informational purposes and a calendar in regards to upcoming meetings. That'll bring us down to persons to be heard. Mary.
Good evening. Congratulations to our new board members. It's the first time I've seen you and to Bob for being our new mayor. My name is Mary Stevenson and we do have a big event happening this Saturday. It's the third annual Women's March. It's titled Ketchikan Women's Empowerment. Hannah Bales is the event coordinator and she's working with Wish. If anyone wants to bring items for Wish, clothing, women's sundries, shoes, socks, they need tons of socks, that'll be accepted at the front door. And also Tousudas is working with the Coast Guard. They're offering credit applications. If approved, the coasties can come in and get groceries and they don't have to pay until the paycheck arrives. So I've been throwing out the idea to both Hannah and Deborah that if she could be there with a little bucket to collect cash donations for those who don't have a credit card and might like a cash. I think the city needs to step to the plate and help the Coast Guard any way we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what did you say the Women's March was?
Saturday. Thank you very much. Saturday at eleven o'clock, Pier Two. They'll have speakers and then they'll work, walk on down to Pier Four and come back. And then they're going over to the cabaret for hot coffee and chocolate and socializing for the rest of the afternoon. Thanks for getting me to remember that part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm here today to bring up the conversation about the lease and the consulting firm. And this is very explanatory. I appreciate the effort was made to clear up a year's effort. In summary, it looks as if whoever is working on a lease, but also in that first last paragraph of it, searches expressed an interest in working should we go out and find another health care provider. So it looks as if it could be a dual purpose. Yes or no?
Correct.
Of getting a new lease with our current provider, Peace Health. But should those negotiations fall through, we're looking for an alternative.
Mary, the lease agreement is probably morphing more into an operational agreement. We provide them, you know, a very nice facility for very little and we expect some things in turn. And so the lease has been the way it's been for a number of years and it's just not current. So it needs to be updated. And that's going to be the first, and that lease will be needed regardless of who operates the hospital. So that's the first state of that. And then through those discussions as we move through it, we'll learn more.
Okay. So I want to officially go on record as for Sam's article of the newspaper. He made mention some members had concerns, they had what appeared red flags, but no comment was extended by the individual to go on record. And I feel as if I, a voter who gets each one of you on the board or on the council, I would like to hear in the record as to a concern or what was a red flag and have it duly noted and hopefully quoted by the reporter in the room at the time because it left a lot of unanswered questions on my part. If you hesitated and you are there and closed executive sessions and seeing things just aren't right but are afraid to speak up on the record, it leaves doubt in my mind that something's being hidden. So to you, I'd like to hear on the record your concerns and thank you very much for this part.
And later on tonight, we'll have a further discussion on that. We were looking for more clarification because there was some concern and I think a lot of that has been answered and we'll have that discussion in open session.
Fabulous. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Seven months and ten days from my accident, being here June seventh. And I was hit by a truck outside on the front of the police department. And I'm doing okay.
Good. The next one is Peter Stanton.
Hello. My name is Peter Stanton. As you might expect, I'm here to talk about our city flag. About a year and a half ago, I first had the thought, you know, Ketchikan should really have a city flag. And I had that thought because even though I've lived here for almost my entire life, I didn't even know we had a city flag. There it is. This is my first time ever seeing it in physical form. Anita Maxwell and the wonderful museum staff just found it in a box where it had been left from the Centennial in nineteen ninety-nine. So that's a significant indicator of how well-loved and how well-used this flag has been. And first, I would like to assure you that I know you're asked to spend lots of time dealing with many extremely important issues to our community and you're asked to make many extremely expensive choices for our community dealing with very expensive decisions. And the issue of our city flag is neither one of those. It's neither very important nor very expensive. However, what I would describe this issue as is as an opportunity. It's not a critical issue, but it's a missed opportunity. We spend so much time, effort and money as a community working on how we present ourselves to the world and how we connect with each other as neighbors. And having a beautiful, well-designed flag that we can all appreciate, it's an incredibly inexpensive, low-hanging fruit that's just begging to be plucked. It's an easy opportunity to promote Ketchikan, to get people excited about what defines our community, to spark the creation of magnificent art and design that we can discuss and debate and select from. And it really would create unlimited business opportunities for people in our city for years to come. So I think that the key sticking point that may be weighing on some of your minds regarding this issue is cost. The main cost of soliciting a new flag would be a cash prize if that was decided that a cash prize should be offered to whatever flag design wins in a flag design contest. I created two polls recently on my Facebook page, Ketchikan Needs A New Flag. In the first poll, a clear majority agreed in thinking that a cash prize should be offered if there's a flag design contest. I think most people agree that artists deserve to be paid for their work, especially if an artist creates a design that would be used in perpetuity by others. Then I created a second poll, which actually surprised me. I expected that many of the people who wanted a cash prize offered would want a prize, significant prize of maybe two thousand, three thousand dollars offered for a flag. I had been researching a recent design contest this past year that was held in Topeka, Kansas, where two thousand dollars was the initial prize offer, but then it ultimately became thirty-five hundred dollars split between four finalists. However, what surprised me in my second poll was that everyone who answered the poll said that a prize of a thousand dollars or less would be perfectly reasonable in their eyes. And they didn't tell me how much less would be reasonable. Nobody commented on my poll. But I imagine maybe five hundred dollars or six hundred dollars would still be seen by many as reasonable and that there would still be many entries in a flag contest offering that sort of prize. Now, I understand that five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars is still a significant amount of money. And I understand that some people in Ketchikan may think that any amount of money spent on a new flag would be a waste, especially if it seems like flags don't get used. We create them and then they go into boxes where they are never seen again. However, as a math teacher, I can't help but think that a thousand dollars is a pretty miniscule amount of money to take up any sort of extended debate time at your meetings. As you know, your city budget is maybe around twenty-seven million dollars a year and a thousand dollars is less than zero point zero zero four percent. And the city budget is approximately seventy-four thousand dollars a day. Increase that daily budget by one point three five percent for just one day and you can have a beautiful flag that can be used in perpetuity. So a thousand dollars is a pittance to spend compared to the numerous continuous expenses that the city faces, especially the thousands upon thousands of dollars that we spend to maintain and beautify our city every year for visitors. So in conclusion, the potential long-term benefits of having a well-designed, widely-recognized and frequently-used flag are limitless. Visitors to Ketchikan see many memorable things here, but they lack an official symbol that represents us and differentiates us from other Alaska cities. Businesses here use the name of our city on countless pieces of merchandise, but they would undoubtedly benefit from having an easily identifiable and reproducible image that to use as well, like a wonderful flag. So we take a lot of pride in our community and we deserve to have a distinctive, inspiring flag that represents us. And I know that a thousand dollars is just a tiny drop in the bucket compared to anything else that's usually on your agenda. So I do truly believe this is a wonderful opportunity to do something positive for a very low price that people in our community can get excited about. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you for bringing that forward. And as the mayor, I've talked with the borough mayor also and I don't know if he can make the same presentation because it's a Ketchikan, like it's comedic, like it's both city and borough. And so I think there is some interest. And so as the mayor and I talk, I think he'll probably bring something to the borough. Hopefully move this forward. I don't disagree that it would be nice to have a symbol of our community that, you know, can be utilized.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So Peter, I've been following this obviously and we talked about this when I was running for office up at the forum. So has there been any interesting concepts for a flag that you've heard of?
I've had a few people talk to me and say that they have designs in mind, but not that many people have shared the designs themselves yet. So I think they're keeping that close to their chest and waiting for a contest to come out.
I think it's going to be all kinds of fun. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that moves us on to the consent agenda. If there are no objections, I would like to put item six A one, six A four, and seven B one on consent. And those are the ordinance in regards to performing arts and it's the appointment of boards and commissions and an ordinance in regards to telecommunications.
Oh, you didn't say seven A one, did you? No.
No.
Seven B one?
Six.
Six A one. Hearing no objections, can I have a motion for consent? Did it move? Had seconded? Yeah. Please read.
Approval of minutes regular city council meeting is January third, two thousand nineteen, and the special city council meetings of December thirteenth and seventeen, two thousand eighteen, exempting the procurement of police department annual licensing and maintenance support for body worn cameras and digital evidence storage from the competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Axon Enterprises, Inc., exempting the procurement of annual dispatch center hardware, software, maintenance services from competitive bidding written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Procom Alaska LLC. Liquor license renewals for Ketchikan Crab and Grill, Chico's Mexican Restaurant and Alaska Fish House. Ordinance number nineteen eighteen ninety-one, adding a new section thirteen point oh nine point oh four oh to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Program For Performing Artists, second reading. Appointments to Boards and Commissions, Mayor Stevenson. Ordinance number nineteen eighteen ninety, amending chapter eleven point two of the telecommunications services and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, first reading.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments, questions? Hearing none, please call the board.
Need a motion?
Well, that's what we did in consent. There was a second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're already there.
Okay.
All right.
Goose?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Virgil?
Yes.
That passes. Moves us on to item six A two, contract number nineteen oh two, consulting services and leasing at Ketchikan Medical Center, ECG Management Consultants. This is a deferred item that was brought back to the table. One of the lay on the tables is a memo in regards to how the group was selected. Bob, could you give us a little update on how you went through the process?
Sure. So since this was something new that we hadn't done before, we decided to see if our bond counsel, David Thompson, who has a very strong professional network, could help us. And he did. And he was able to work in through his network, get folks to respond to a brief scope of services that we have prepared. And in that process, we identified six companies that provided services in the health care industry. And so we did phone interviews, conversations, emails and discussions with some of these folks and also looked at their website to see what type of services they offered. And we ended up having to eliminate some of those companies because they do mergers and acquisitions and capital funding and that's really not what we were looking for. We were looking for firms that have the ability to go in and develop and consult with regards to operating agreements and that's what we wanted. So we identified two firms that were capable of doing this. One firm was called, I think it was Kaufman Hall. And I was actually pretty excited about that firm only to find out that they had a definite conflict of interest in their relationship with Peace Health. And the principal that I spoke with said that they had actually a very strong relationship with that company. And so we decided not to include them in the process. And so we went back out and were able to find ECG, which is the company that we ended up recommending for your consideration. ECG at the time indicated that they did not have a significant conflict of interest, which is probably correct at that point. They did some work for Peace Health, but it was pretty minor stuff. They also had experience in Alaska, which I thought was very, very helpful because Alaska, I believe the market's a little bit unique compared to what's going on down the Lower Forty-Aid. And of course, we brought in the Ketchikan and the council had an opportunity to visit with those folks. So what we concluded with is that there's not a lot of firms out there that do this type of work. And it took quite a while, but it's just the location firms that we did. And I'm not sure if we would have do this again, we would end up with anything different because I think it seems like in this industry, everybody gets worked with everybody and so there's always going to be some kind of a potential conflict of interest. So probably the best thing for us to do is to try to see if we can't manage that conflict so it doesn't interfere with the work that's being done by whoever we choose to be our consultant. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
So Kaufman and Hall, that was the firm that you said you got excited about, but they were eliminated because they have a relationship with Peace Health?
Yes, they did, yes.
So when we discovered that ECG Management had a relationship with Peace Health, I guess I don't understand why we didn't bring all of the other ones back in and ask them to quote us on this too.
Well, the decision at the time was that a conflict of interest really wasn't. We were concerned about that, so we went with ECG because at that time, they said they didn't have a conflict of interest. And then we had already made arrangements to have them come to Ketchikan. And after they came to Ketchikan, or just before they came to Ketchikan, I believe that they had, well, that they had a conflict.
Yes. Continue then.
But they...
Let her continue, ma'am.
Yeah. So they, I mean, it's a pretty big conflict though. I mean, they're going, I'd like to know what it is compared to Kaufman because ECG is going to be working on six facilities. That seems like a pretty big job to me.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying that that...
No, no, I know. I'm just asking.
... became available after we'd already had our meeting with ECG and after we had already had our discussion with Kaufman.
Okay. And then I guess the other question this might be for Lacy. I know that Peace Health approached us about renewing the lease, which is, and I think we need to keep in mind, that it's five years out. So telling me that, you know, we're busy and we can't find another one. I mean, we don't need to rush on this, I don't think. It's five years out.
I, councilmember Zingy, I would agree with you. I think what we're comparing that to is the amount of time that it's taken us to arrive at this point, which has been a year. As I stated in my memo, we do have quite a few projects on the horizon that are going to need a significant amount of our time and your time as councilmembers. I think you need to also bear in mind that we've never had concerted conversations with Peace Health regarding a lease. This is going to be a long process just to determine what the health care needs are for the community, developing criteria and mechanisms regardless of the provider. And you also need, I think, to bear in mind that if the council decides that negotiations with Peace Health, they're at a standstill, they want to explore an alternate provider, that is going to be another very lengthy process. And then if we decide to go with an alternate provider, not Peace Health, the transition from Peace Health to that other provider is going to be an extremely long endeavor. It's not a matter of shutting the door, turning off the lights and then the next day, the next provider comes along. It's not turnkey. So the process they're in of transferring operation from one provider to another is, I think, a very serious endeavor that would take potentially several years. So working backward, you have, I think you need to take all those things into consideration.
I agree with that. But I guess for me, Peace Health came to us, did they come to us with some kind of a lease or what they wanted usually? Because I deal with leases all the time, when someone wants to renew their lease or extend their lease and, you know, they're doing it three years ahead of time, they tell me what they want. They go, okay, I want, I want to do my lease. Here's some, a list of some of the things I'm looking for.
To my knowledge, councilmember Zingy, they have not specified what they would like to talk about. They submitted a letter to the city manager that stated that they were eager to get the process of negotiating a new lease underway. Again, as Mayor Stevenson had mentioned, the lease that we currently have has basically been on a renewal period. The basis of that lease is from, I'm not sure when. I mean, it's twenty-five or more years old. It's quite outdated and it's not reflective of the changes that have been made to the facility that the city has invested in. So it's, it needs, I think, substantial consideration.
And the only thing I would add of that, that lease is not really an operator's lease per se. It's more of a building lease. So a lot of the issues that we've been talking about over the last couple of months aren't really discussed in that way.
So I wondered why, one of the reasons I am voting no, I believe I'm still voting no, is because of this conflict of interest with Peace Health. But in putting out this memo that we received from you and using Dave Thom, Davis Thompson, Dave Thompson, our bond counsel in the Seattle area, in reviewing all of these firms, they, it was extensive research from what I understand. They made phone calls, they made, he made contact, he did internet checks. And PFM, the city simply eliminated them from consideration based on Peace Health as being a client. You give no other information about PFM. You don't say there's this other conflict, maybe there's a, there's an unbiased thing they have going on, but solely based on their, them having Peace Health as a client.
Not, not...
PFM. PFM.
Well, some of the comments that I'm quoting in my, in my report application from the folks that we spoke with or had email correspondence with, I mean, we had several firms came back and say that, you know, given the scope of services you're asking for, we can't, we can't do the work. Or they came back and said, you know, we have a conflict with Peace Health. And so once they gave us that information, if you're correct, we didn't dig any further to find out, you know, what the conflict was or... And so we just kind of went on to the next, the next firm.
Okay. And one more reason, this is kind of a secondary reason, but in looking through that huge packet that the consultants gave us on their phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, I didn't really understand. And I wanted to have a conversation with the consultants, but I understand I need to go through the city manager or the mayor. Their phase one was to go out into the community and find out where we're lacking, where the community feels there's a void in our health care. And a lot of it I'm hearing is from the billing and not so much health care. However, we heard last meeting, some of it is in the health care also. So this firm now that we're voting on, ECG, phase one is to find, do the assessment, find out. Phase two immediately is to go into negotiations with Peace Health. I don't understand that to be phase two. I would think once they find out what the community wants, what we need immediately in RFP would be sent out. in RFP would be sent out, not go into negotiations with Peace Health and see if we can come to an agreement. No, an RFP. And so, I didn't like the way they have their scope of work listed. And I understand it'll come back to the council and we will decide, but why would they even assume that phase two would be go into negotiations with Peace Health?
Lacy, if you want.
Okay, Councilmember Isom, when ECG came to town and we spoke with them, they outlined a number of potential steps that the city council could take. And we, I recall having that discussion in executive session with the council and it was decided at that point in time that we would continue having discussions with Peace Health. And if those were not fruitful, then we could have the discussion about seeking a request for proposals for other providers. If the council would like to bypass step two through working through phase one, we can certainly do that. But at the direction from that November meeting, it was to have that essentially a four-phased approach to the scope of services.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mark?
A couple of questions and, pardon me, and comments in order. Mr. Mill, this list you were able to provide us, was this comprehensive? Is this pretty much what's out there that's even available? Because I see a lot of disqualifiers pre-quit that's not within their scope of work or conflict of interest. Is this the sum total of what's out there?
All I can tell you is the sum total of who we spoke with and who we got responses from. And usually, the folks that were identified, the companies that were identified as being a possible provider to the services we're looking for, we did contact, we spoke. And that's a summary of how we, what we found out from each firm that we looked at. Are there other firms out there in the U.S. to do this type of work? We weren't able to locate any.
Another question, the one hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollar figure, just for clarity's sake, that's just phase one? That's just the phase one amount, correct?
That's what I've been told, yes.
Okay, well, I got a big problem with that, quite frankly. Phase one, review the lease, go out and talk to the community. Two hundred thousand dollars plus fifteen percent, okay? And I'm going to ask for some guidance from the city attorney pretty soon. Looking at their proposal, which was based upon the steps that we asked for, I'm going to render a guess, that's the cheapest part of this whole thing. Scan through the lease tonight and the two amendments, it's fifty-one pages. The lease is fifty-one pages and we're going to do community outreach. Well, it seems to me that the community has already in many ways reached out to us. So, I've got an enormous problem with the cost for the product rendered. It seems extremely high. If it was two hundred thousand dollars to take us through all four phases, I think that's a different thing. But if you go from that into, now we're going to develop a lease, a potential lease, and go through those steps, that's not going to be cheaper. And if we have to go to an RFP, that's the most difficult because if we end up changing providers, that's going to present a whole list of challenges, some that I can't even, I can't even imagine.
Dick? Yeah, I, I guess just to begin with, right now, I'm not worried about this perceived conflict of interest. And the reason why, almost everybody we deal with on something of this size, they deal with a lot of people. Look at the one we're dealing with the docs on. Those people deal with everybody and we're not worried about conflict of interest there is they learn that they treat all of their customers the same way. So, I, I'm not worried about it from that standpoint. I probably agree with Mark a little bit on the cost, I don't know about that, but it seems high. But I think that the important thing is that we sit down, we said we wanted to do, we know we need a new lease because nobody in, be careful, a lot of people in town are concerned about what the services we're getting. And we've got different anecdotes from a lot of people. Some of them are written, some of them are conversations, but I think we need somebody, unless we want to take the time, to sit down and actually have a public meeting or two and then get some written documentation of what it is, the problem. So, that fits in and determines where this, what this lease is going to look like, an operating lease and not a building lease in the future. So, I, I guess that, I think that we, well, the other thing I was going to say is that right now, I trust the manager to look at this and come back. He was already said he's checked with him and will make, can make adjustments because a big company like that, even the people that, I mean, we deal with everybody in town here, the people that deal with the wastewater and so forth, you could say they got conflicts too. But, big companies like that that will do us the service that are qualified are going to work with some of the same customers. So, I think we've got to be careful about saying that and trusting that the manager and us can, can keep it moving in the right way without getting into a jam. But I, right now, I just think we, and I don't really want to wait. I was looking at the chart here, we've probably got about four years before we have to have a new lease signed, but this lease needs to be pinned down probably one to two years ahead of time unless we give Peace Health, if we were to move out of the operator, a couple of years to change. They're not going to, that's not going to go like turning the key, it's going to take some time to change. And that, and we've got the opportunity, I guess, say, "Okay, we started earlier, we, it'll be two years after the lease is over with that we didn't get it done." So, I'd say, I, this has been going on long enough, I think it's time for us to keep it moving and we've got it moving. It's, that's just my opinion. So, I'm going to vote yes.
Judy?
So, well, I'm, you know, we keep talking about RFP and I'm not, I'm not there, I'm not, I'm just not there. I think that what we're talking about though is, we have a land lease right now, we have a building lease and we're changing that, right? So, I don't like, I don't like two hundred thousand dollars, but I do understand that we're now going to more of an operating agreement type of lease, right? But two hundred thousand dollars, I just think that telling us that, you know, "We know you guys are really busy," we are really busy, but this is really important to our community. You know, we've heard from a lot of people, there's been billing issues, there's been, you know, people coming and telling us about the health problems they've had. I've also had some good stories. I just think this is very important to our community and our economy and we really need to stop and take the time to do it right. And that's my thoughts on it and I'm going to vote no.
Just to tag along with what you said on the price again, and I am not for that price. If, if there, if we don't see a conflict that they're, the clients are Peace Health, we've got two other firms here that we could maybe get, maybe get an estimate from. This two hundred thousand covers exactly what Mark just said, a community assessment, find out where the voids are, find out what the people want and see what, we nail the scope of the project now for phase one, see what the other firms can offer us.
What I can say, if the conflict of interest issue, we all believe it can be managed, then I would suggest we go back and talk to Kaufman Hall again. They did indicate that if the city wanted to live with this conflict of interest, they'd be happy to talk with us.
Sam, and then.
Thanks. I am rise in strong support of this, of this agenda item. And the reason I do is, is because we all know that there's improvements that we need to make. The lease that we have is antiquated. And when these guys came up and gave us their presentation, I learned more about what we didn't know than, than anything else. We are giving away a lot of leverage that we could use to bring about some changes that would be in the best interest of the people that we serve. I mean, we should have a voice on, you know, what kind of programming goes on at the hospital, like, you know, drug addiction, alcoholism, like, you know, those kinds of things, you know, for people to go in and get, rather than having to go to jail or somewhere else. We don't have a lot of time. We have, this is, this is a cumbersome project and there's a lot of big players involved. And it's not just the city of Ketchikan and it's not just Peace Health, it's KIC, it's other people that are in the region. I think what needs to happen here is that Ketchikan needs to think regionally and as a healthcare provider. And we have KIC dollars, we have, you know, the, all the money in the community for the hospital. My biggest problem with healthcare period is the cost of it and the cost of health inherent, it's scary. So, if we can do something with that, we can also bring about some changes that we need. We need to update our, our lease that reflects, you know, what we have. I think what we have now is just completely irrelevant. I mean, if we haven't updated this thing in twenty-five years or thirty years, then it's, it's more than past time. I don't think that the conflict of interest, that is the most widely used, overused thing there is out there. I think that these guys, when they had another project within their own company come up, they let us know first, you know, that, hey, this comes up, we don't really see it as a conflict, but if you want to take a look at the other provider, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't want to drag this out for ten years, I don't want to do another year and a half worth of work again. You know, two hundred thousand dollars may seem like a lot of money, but if you think about the benefit that we could bring about and if you think about the other expenditures that we have vis a vis the port and what we're doing with that, with our consultants and all the other things that we're doing, I think it's reasonable. And I understand your reservations and your, you know, the cost and some of the other things I'm hearing, but I still would just like to proceed and we can change how we do this thing as we go along. We don't, you know, their proposal is just not a proposal. We can change that as we get into it. So, I'm supportive of this concept and I hope that we can go forward at some point. Thanks.
Judy?
So, two hundred thousand dollars, it's just phase one though. It's not the whole project. And I don't see anything wrong now at this point. I'm really, I agree with you, Sam, that, you know, I learned a lot about what we didn't have when ECG came and gave their presentation. But if Kaufman Hall can do the same thing, maybe it's worth looking at them to see what they come in at. I mean, I think it's that important and...
Dick, and then Mark.
All I was going to say is that, you know, I think a lot of our concern is that upfront cost and I can't quite determine here whether that's a hard figure, two hundred grand or whether it'll be one of those things, here's the things we're going to do and we bill you back for it, whether we can monitor that billing back and it comes in less, I don't know. But I, I think as much as anything to keep this moving, we at least, we ought to go back to them and say, "Hey, this first upfront price for what you're doing seems a little bit, a little high and can we get it down and still get the same results?" And make, and clarify exactly what the end results are up to that next step so that we clearly have these steps identified, one's the community involvement and then, once you get that, then you're going to develop this new modern contract of whatever it's called. And then, what we do with that contract, whether we negotiate with it or whether we throw it out on the street, that's our decision, once we get to that point, that we've got that contract. But I think we, I don't think, I really don't want to stop this point right now, but we might want to have some discussions to see if it, we can bring the cost down a little bit. And even if we ask the other guy, say, "What do you think about what would this cost?" If, if they're good for us, but I don't, whether, these, these guys were just too good for me to, to kick out the door because of the conflict and then, but the cost is a concern.
Mark? Couple of things. We should never underestimate or use loosely the term conflict of interest because the essence of an arms-length transaction would be devoid of that. Now, to appreciate staff's work, this is a lot like the grease industry. It's a huge industry, but a small family. I was really impressed with ECG. I thought their presentation was top flight. I don't know, but the reason I asked for this additional information is, I'm not convinced after reading this that our options are necessarily better. So, while I am averse to a conflict of interest, at first blush, it doesn't appear to be easily avoided, okay? I understand we're going from a land lease to an operational lease, which would also influence the scope of work for review of the lease. And I don't want to put the city attorney on the spot, but this just occurred to me tonight, I haven't had any discussions with him. Do we have other options? Could the city attorney, look at, look at phase one, we're going to do community outreach and we're going to review the lease. Would it be, would it be worth considering having the city attorney review the present lease to look for deficiencies and where we want to go from there? And a few minutes ago, somebody made mention that Peace Health has reached out to us and they're interested in maintaining and preserving and enhancing this relationship. I don't see anybody from Peace Health here tonight in the audience. And if we want to do community outreach, it's called a survey and it's hard because sometimes you hear things you don't want to hear. But perhaps if we want to do community outreach, Peace Health would like to spend a few dollars and they could do a survey and then they could bring us the results. And they, we could hear the good, the bad, the billing, the level of care. I had a conversation with somebody today who was, had nothing but great things to say about their doctor at Peace Health. Why don't we just get the unfiltered results? But if the first step in this is to see where we're at and see if maintaining the relationship and improving it for sure with, with Peace Health is the best way to go, it seems logical to me that they should be participants in the process. And then, one last thing, this was deferred till this meeting because Councilmember Bergeron and, and I were absent. And it was thought that the full consideration of all the council would be appropriate. I agree. We have two council people that aren't here tonight. So, wherever we end up tonight, I don't, I don't want to take ten years either, but it would seem, if, if that was a relevant reason to defer till this meeting, that hasn't changed, folks. We're two people short. That's all I got, you know?
Just one more thing about the rate of two hundred thousand. I just think it would be worth looking at these other firms because they're upfront with their rate, the lead consultant is making six hundred and ten dollars an hour and the least paid person, their administrative assistant, makes a hundred and twenty dollars an hour. And I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, maybe somebody else can do better, better than that. Two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I think, Dick, they said at least a hundred and eighty thousand, up to two hundred thousand, so...
So, I think, as I recollect, the first mention of the lease was brought up by the city at Ketchikan and I think it was at the time that the new administrator was in town and we were having all these discussions in public. And so, they responded because they would rather have it done sooner than later also so they know what you're dealing with. And I think it became very evident as, and I think, Mick, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've already reviewed this with the council once before, have you not? The lease, the existing lease?
Good evening. I don't know that it's been reviewed in, in any detail, you know, if the council is presently constituted, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a land and a building lease and it's a far different creature. I was just going back, or it'd been a while since I'd read the, the scope of work, but it says, "Current contract terms divided, current contract established. Based on understanding of financial terms, clinical service obligations and performance and liabilities, it's what you're not going to find there that brings us to today, in my opinion." It has some language that touches on that, it has, you know, fairly standard terms about not discriminating against people, but it's pretty much who pays for the broken window, who pays for the insurance. It never envisioned anything like this. So, whatever components are in there, phase one, and, you know, how they may have done their internal accounting, that is going to end up not being, you know, if, if it's, if it's an hour, there's not a whole lot more there to do on that particular task. The scope of the rest of it, you know, I, I don't know. The scope of the rest of it, you know, I, I don't know. You know, may boil down to what's important to the client or since we know so little about this, what they view as important information gathering and analysis going forward. But no, the, the lease is gonna be basically a do-over.
So in regards to the fact that we have two council members missing and there are some interests in the conversation tonight to reach out and see what the other contractor may be willing to offer. And I think there might be an option to talk to this group about the costs and a little more detail about that. And I think we did have that in the presentation, but I think to bring it back to life. I guess I propose, or request another motion to defer until such time as management has information to bring back to us. I think would be the best way to do that. And, and I agree with everybody at the, the table tonight because all of you are speaking in regards to what we feel is best for Ketchikan. And I think that we need to work really hard at this and decisions aren't right now that clear. I think we all understand that there needs to be a rewrite of this lease, but we're not sure how we're gonna get there. So, given that we have time and a time-related thing, that we may get to the point where we have the information necessary to work with the existing contractor and come out with a great, great project, you know? And if that doesn't work, then we go down again. But I, I think that we owe it to the community and to the provider that's been with us for a long time to try to work through these situations and better the, the, I guess, the, how people feel about our healthcare system in the community and that's what...
Sam.
Yeah, I, I, some of the outcomes of this whole process would be that we would learn to work together as a community. Like the KIC's healthcare dollars are largely exported. I mean, we go to Sitka, we go to Anchorage. We've got this $78 million hospital sitting right next door that we should learn to put some money in, fund some doctors, do this kind of a thing. So it's more, it's more of a community hospital and to bring some economies to their operation that maybe we can pass on to all the people that we represent. And so I'm pretty excited to dive into this. I certainly think that we have time to, to look at the other contractors and to wait for staff to come back with that. I think that, like I said, the conflict of interest, I think, is something that we could work with with probably both contractors and I'm looking forward to seeing what the other folks have to say and maybe we can come to consensus and go forward.
So before we go into a motion to defer, do you think you have enough information, Lacy and Bob, to move forward a little bit and gather more information from the council?
I, I think we do. Mayor Severson, I do want to hear from, from Bob and his experience if you were to reach out to Kaufman Hall and have that level of conversation. Just rough order of time, we can expect, based on your schedule, to have that level of conversation, how they, how they've been responsive. I, I, I know that we want to defer this, or the council's deciding to defer this motion, but it may be some time before we have all of these other pieces of information in place to bring back to the council.
And the other thing that I, I may suggest is there are council member or two that may want to sit in on this so we have firsthand, you know, they can listen in to the, to the conversation, I think, a little bit, so they can get a better understanding of how these operations work. I guess it's all new to us.
We can certainly do that.
Is there anybody interested in sitting in on? Okay, anybody else?
I'll sit in.
All right, we have two, Julie and two Jays. So do I have a motion to defer? Until such time as we can bring information in?
Move to defer, Your Honor.
Sorry. Move in second and a deferment until such time as you have information to bring back to the council.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, any discussion in this session, so... Please call them.
Okay. Isom?
Yes.
Kuz?
Here.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
First one.
Hi. Thank you very much. And again, I understand that this is a process that we have to go through. Next item of business is 683 ordinance number 191887, increasing the water rates by 6%. Second reading.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Move the city council approved in second reading ordinance number 191887, increasing water rates by 6%. Establishing a date for a public hearing and providing effective date.
Second.
Then move in second and any discussion. Seeing none, please call them.
Bergeron?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
If that passes for the law, moves us on to item B1, ordinance number 191888, increasing electrical rates by three and one-half percent. Second reading.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council approved in second reading ordinance number 19-1888, increasing electric rates by three and one-half percent. Establishing a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
Okay. Then move in second. Judy? Does anybody have any comments? Seeing none, please call them.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
No.
Kuz?
Here.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes, moves us on to item B2, ordinance number 191889, increasing water rates except for seafood processors by five and one-half percent, increasing seafood processor water rates by 35%. Second reading.
Your Honor.
Yes, good, Judy.
I move the city council approved in second reading ordinance number 191889, increasing the water rates except for the seafood processors by five and one-half percent and increasing the seafood processor rates by 35%. Establishing a date for a public hearing and providing an effective date.
Then move in second. Judy, anything? Anybody else? Hearing none, please call them.
Mr. R?
Yeah.
So the increasing rates, is it, everybody paying their share now with the, because it used to be that the seafood processors weren't paying what, what cost to produce them?
So this is the third raise of three and it's, rather than, because they're not metered at this time, we took the existing usage, looked at how the other water rates around the southeast Alaska is going and what our usage is, and this is to get them up to market. Move them closer to market.
Closer.
Anybody else? Please call them.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Thank you. That moves us on to item seven of business, General Government. Item one, the Ketchikan flag.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council direct staff to take such action regarding a formal solicitation for a new city flag as determined appropriate by the city council.
Second.
Move in second. Discussion?
Your Honor, we talked about a prize money for the, the flag, the flag development contest and I was hoping to pass something laid on the table by this meeting, but I think it's something that I strongly support. I think the, the, the whole idea of the flag, now that I've been watching and this idea developing. And actually, I was quite shocked when Peter pulled off that flag. I was going, where did you get that, you know, because I've never seen it. I thi- I think it's a, I think it's a good opportunity to, to do something pretty unique and it's something that, you know, maybe, you know, could be part of our brand. So, you know, I'm kind of excited about this. It's a good idea. And I hope that we could identify a source to fund the prize money and it's really interesting to council to pony up a little for this.
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah. It's a great stuff, a couple thousand?
Well, I think the, the first case is I'd like to get some feedback from the borough and I think they're willing to participate in this also.
Sure.
And then I guess the, we gotta look at how we're gonna do this. Is it a community-wide professional artist type thing? Are we looking for something, you know, in the past you've seen things where they've gone through the school system, and then they refine those drawings from wherever they want? So I, I guess there's a lot of discussion yet to figure out before we start how we want, how we want to make that go. And then we have to set up a committee to actually do the judgment.
Your Honor?
We have one right here.
Oh, sorry.
Is this something that we could get the Arts Council to take on and do? I don't know.
Visitors Bureau, I was thinking anybody but us on the selection team.
Dick, and then I'll let Lacy go.
Okay, I, I guess I'm having a hard time getting my head around this and even supporting it. And I'll, I'll use Peterson's name and, and Sam's here haven't demonstrated to me what value that flag is. It's been in a box. Has it ever flown anywhere? Who knows what it is? What are we gonna do with it if we get a new one? And, and money, getting a new one is not the issue. It's what are we gonna do with it? Are we, is somebody gonna run it up the pole every day and run it down? Because that's a cost. So somebody's gonna have to convince me what the value of it is. And I cannot see it, so I just, I can't support it at this point in time.
Lacy.
Just with regard, Mayor Severson, to sort of the mechanism of how, how we get this off the ground and thinking about the Arts Council or the Visitors Bureau, we can certainly have that conversation. Do you foresee that organization developing their requests for proposals and creating criteria? If so, I think it would be appropriate to consider alongside some sort of reward for the chosen artists, some sort of administrative fee to give that organization if we're asking them to take it on. That's, that's fairly standard.
Because something so easy, you know, that's so great.
And so I, I think at one time, we had a three-spar mass at, on a port and we may have flown the diva though.
Port and Harbor's director, Steve Corpron. The port has three howlards and the Harbor Master Building has three howlards as well. I've seen that flag for the last 18 and a half years because it's on, it's with all the flags on the Jim at the Coast Guard base. So I know exactly what the flag looked like when they said, you know, we have a flag. I've thought about trying to purchase some over the years because we have an empty howlard at the, at the Harbor Master Building. I like the current flag. I don't know if you really need to do a, get a new one. Just have us buy a bunch of the current ones and we can start flying those. There's, there is a follow-on cost. If you fly them 24/7 like we do at the Harbor Master Building, we go through probably four, four or five US flags a year and about the same number of state flags. So, you know, you'd be a cost at that. The port, we've been having issues with the howlards, especially in the big storms. So we, the last two winters, we've taken the, the flags down at the port for the winter time. But i- if we can buy a bunch of the current flags, I'll fly them. I don't even know why we need to, I like the current one, you know, you're talking about making it unique and proud of Ketchikan. I think it's kind of cool. I've been looking at it almost, you know, every other day down at the Coast Guard base for 18 and a half years, so...
Any comments?
Mayor.
Yes.
I agree with Steve. I do like the current flag. And I think it just doesn't have enough buy-in because we don't have it flying everywhere. I do think it's going to cost more money than Mr. Stanton thinks because when I, when I look at, at the Facebook page that was created, I mean, they mentioned everything. We produced the image on all city buildings, have it flying over everywhere that is representing the city on all stationary, maybe on our nameplates that have our names. Just have it out everywhere so that people see it, they recognize it and they want to make stickers and put it on their vehicles. I don't think there's anything wrong with that flag. I think, I think it's going to be relative. I think there's gonna be a lot of opinions if we try, go out and try to choose a different flag. And I just wondered if anyone had contacted Daniel Sheets about this, about our considering this. He was the person who designed that flag in 1999. Did anyone have a conversation with him? Yeah.
Yes.
I was just curious, Councilmember Isom, does, does he still live here? Do we know what his status is? Yeah, I, I don't know that either, so I, I would hope that if he were still here or if someone knew of his whereabouts, they would catch wind of this and maybe we'd hear from him, but...
Thank you, Steve. So...
One more comment. Whatever process we might use, can't follow the one we did for the new brain gauge.
Maybe we hire a consultant?
Before we get completely sidetracked on this, I, I think some of the value in this whole exercise is, is that the kids at the high school get behind this. The teacher at the high school, we've got some young people involved in this. And this is how to do and to work and affect things within your own government. I, that's the value that I see in this. And I also see an opportunity, it's what we're looking at, doing uplands development, improving our ports and harbors, that this is part of our rebranding or whatever we're doing to improve ourselves. And so I see the value in this and I think for that reason that we should be wholeheartedly engaging in this process to do the minimal amount, let's do this. Let's get a new flag out, let's get a contest out and let's not be the judges at all. Let's put this off on the Arts Council, the Visitors Bureau and let's fly that thing every day that the visitors are around and, you know, let's be... But I never knew what our Ketchikan flag was until Peter brought it up, so I think it's a good idea.
Judy.
I think it helps create, you know, it helps community, it engages our youth and who knows what that can lead to? I think it does do some branding, helps us do that. I'm not exactly a fan of the other flag. I don't know that I've given it much thought, but I really appreciate you bringing that forward because I think one of the things that we don't do well is engage our community in some decisions. And I think this is an opportunity to do that and to get our youth interested. So I'm for it.
And the motion on the table is to, without a cost, is to work on bringing this forward. So, and again, I think there is an opportunity and a willingness from the borough to work with this as a combined project. So I don't know how we want to move forward at this time because we, I don't want to set a, a value or price or, or a criteria yet until we, we talk to some other people.
Your Honor.
Yes, yes. Lacy, did you have something?
I, I did, just regarding our conversation with the borough, I did pass them this information as well as Mr. Stanton's additional information so they're aware of what, you know, this project could look like. It would seem that if, if the council would like to move forward with a new flag, that we wait and hear what the borough says if we want to make it a community-wide flag rather than a city of Ketchikan flag and then move from there.
If there's no objection from the council, I would be willing to communicate with the mayor of the borough and bring this back to the project combined from the two of them. That work?
That's good.
Would that, would that help us combine?
Consolidation.
Consolidation? We'd consolidate. We'd have a single flag.
And, and so what do you want to do with the motion, Judy? You want to wait until it comes back? You want to withdraw it and then I'll work with my counterpart?
Sure. I'm with John.
We were just given direction. There wasn't really a motion except to give direction.
All right.
They got it, sir.
Direction is to...
Out of the borough.
And so the flag that Mr. Stanton has, is that the, from the library?
Museum.
Museum? Is it an artifact or is it a usable flag?
Doesn't look like it has lasted long in the wind.
And Nada Maxwell Museum Director, it is not part of our permanent collection. In fact, it was in a box leftover from the Centennial Celebration in 1999, 2000 and we had some trouble even locating it, so...
Could you turn that over to the assistant city manager? We'll have the flag at the front of the room here with the rest of these.
Excellent suggestion.
Since it is our flag at this time.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, that's good. So that brings us down to item 72, establish a minimum bid for the sale of 319 Main Street, Old Fire Station Number One.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move the city council establish a minimum bid of $655,733 for the sale of 319 Main Street, the Old Fire Station Number One.
Second.
Then move and second it. Lacy?
I believe our last direction from the council was to explore how to dispose of the... I believe our last direction from the council was to explore how to dispose of this property. Attorney Seaver and Public Works Director, Hilsen, have been examining the building and have established a potential minimum bid price, which is six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is the price of the land and the improvements. This, this is purely at the discretion of the council at this point. If you feel that that is an accurate and viable figure, you can, you can go in any direction that you want. So this is purely information at this point. If you want to set that as the minimum bid, if you want to have discussion at looking at an alternate price based on what we know of that facility.
Yes.
I wondered if, if the city's ever had an outcry auction on something like this, starting the bid, what the starting bid would be if this motion passes. Not that I, since I've been here, but we used to do things like that in Thorn Bay. And I know that's not Ketchikan, but like an outcry auction, you just announce it everywhere, California, Washington, Oregon. And then you gather people, they have to be here in person, and you have an outcry auction and start the bid at a certain price. You never know where it'll go.
Councilmember Eisen, I, I have no knowledge of a history of that. I'm not sure if the mayor knows. We can certainly consult the attorney to see if we've ever had an outcry auction for a parcel.
No, but you have.
No, I, I don't, I don't believe we, we have. We've used, well, you know, the disc that could get rather interesting. We've used basically a competitive bid type of process, so people don't have to be there. They, you know, they see time, they decode it. And if you have it like at X day for X number of time, I suppose you could look and have people there with powers of attorney and whatnot.
Yeah, I don't even know if that's the best way to do it.
A real estate transaction that as the council appreciates has a number of issues involved, but I would want to make sure people have had all the required documents and information some, you know, at some point ahead of time. But no, we've not done that.
Dan.
Yeah, assuming we will establish this as the minimum value or minimum bid, do we still have to surplus this? Or did we get that job done? Are we still in the game of months out before we can even say, here, give me a bid? I, I don't know where, what the rest of the legal process is.
And I can talk to that if you'd like.
Okay.
And, and just to back up on something else either. All I did was get what information the borough has and just provide that as information. It's not to suggest one thing, one thing or the other. I think after tonight, we'll have enough direction that we should have second reading in February, an ordinance that will set forth the disposal and the RFP packet, which is going to be involved and can have some details that I think the council would like to see. That would be set for the first reading. There'll be a second reading in thirty days. And as to when it's declared surplus, I think the way to do that is when we have the first reading of the ordinance that it's declared surplus at that point. Because at this juncture, the only, it's declared surplus, then it would otherwise, the only, the only process we have is the appraisal, the competitive bid, the requirements that are set forth in the code as it exists. And the council's indicated that that's really not the way that it wants to go in this particular situation. And I think there's good reason for that. And for assumption purposes, I would figure it's worth at least thirty thousand. So we would need to go through the ordinance process and, and no matter what we do, because of the value, the interest in the land, at least potentially, it could be that. So to answer your question, declaring it surplus now without any means or the desired means to get rid of it isn't going to save us any time on the front end.
So I guess for me, and again, I'm looking at these field notes here that had the assessed values and stuff on them. They're, they're, you know, an error on the fact that the assessed total wasn't carried down correctly, but it's six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. If we truly want to surplus this building, that's the first thing we should do. And I think that we should, I mean, if somebody's going to give me six hundred thousand dollars for this building, I'd be really happy, but I don't think it's going to happen. I think we got to list it that way and then we'll take any offers and review them. We'll give you, you don't have to take any, right? So.
Well, that's two, that's two opposing concepts.
What is?
If we have a minimum bid, then if it's under that, we would be obligated to reject it.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And so.
Well, I think we start out with the assessed value and then see what goes from there again. Yes, Judy.
Okay, so Mark, Councilman Flora and I toured this building. And I'd be interested in what he has to say, but I, I just don't think six hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I see the land, I see value in the land, but I think asking six hundred, with all due respect, John, or asking six hundred thousand dollars for that building, we're just, we're going to put out that RFP or whatever that thing, we're going to get nothing. And we're going to be just like Criff. We'll be back again, doing it again.
Your Honor.
Yes.
This is the Criff model. This is exactly the Criff model. It, it's kind of interesting because while this process absolutely has to be public and transparent, we influence what the offer is going to be merely by having this discussion in public, which we have to do. I understand that. But if you were going to sell your house to somebody, you wouldn't be having that discussion with them sitting five feet away from you, right? So we have the opportunity to do one of a couple of things. We can talk about it and discount it too much and not get what we might have gotten potentially. We can inflate the price to a price that nobody's going to pay and end up going nowhere. Or we land somewhere in the middle. So our actions influence the buyer. Quite frankly, I think Councilmember Eisen's idea is worth further consideration because that building is worth what somebody will pay for it, and it's not worth a penny more. And while we go through this discussion, I did have a discussion with staff today. To date, our approximate holding costs are approaching one hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is the Criff model. This right here is the Criff model replicated exactly. So I'm not really that thrilled with doing what we did in the past that didn't work. I'd like to see more information or potential. I think the outcry auction is, is, is an excellent idea to look further into to see if it's legal viable and if it can bear fruit.
So.
Dan.
I was just going to say, you know, if you put your house on the market for a price, you don't always get it. It's always to be what the market is. Somebody, if it's right, you may get, you may get lower, you may agree to that. You may get higher, you agree to that too. So like, kind of like, you know, an outcry is probably the cleanest, fastest way to get this thing done if we're ready to get rid of it. This, this right here just says, hey, this is what I think it's worth. Now make a bid, let's go. Put your money where your mouth is and in our pocket.
So I guess to the council liking, we'll give direction to staff to see what an outcry auction would look like. And then bring us, I don't know how, how that all works. If there is a, you know, a minimum to recover our costs or how we may do that kind of stuff.
I don't know that I could, the staff could figure out how we might do a buy-in outcry auction in the timeframe that I just mentioned. I mean, doing it, doing it with, with a competitive bid, I'm almost at the filling and the take stages. But you would need to have, I guess, a place where everyone would be. You would have to have people there presumably with the money or processed it. If they did not have the money that day, they had to have it within X number of days and it would go to another bidder. People that couldn't be there because you're dealing with real estate would have to present us with some valid form of power of attorney. The Public Works Director believes that there may be a lead issue. And as he and I have discussed, if there's some possibility residential lease there, then people are going to have to acknowledge that they have the pamphlet and the lead warnings up to ten days before they sign. You know, then we'll have to have a place, you know, a, a, a place and however many people are going to be there on that particular day. They will have to, I think, somehow be distributed in time that they will have seen the proposed covenants, conditions and restrictions in respect to the facade. And so, well, it's certainly possible to do it this way. You know, it's, it's going to involve a lot more logistics and considerations than if they're to have everything by the clerk with a check before they close the business on day X. And you'll, you know, you'll need to man the auction in some fashion too. But these are all things that, it's sort of taken a sharp turn. So the, the notion, I'm, I'm going to be unavailable for a couple of weeks, that, that could be straightened out. And the amount of time we have left is pretty slim, just so you know.
I, I don't think it's an immediate rush at this point, but I think it's a process. And I think it might be a process that we'll think about because there's probably other properties that we have that may be better sold by outcry auction than any other reason. When we get these foreclosed buildings and all this other kind of stuff and we want to get them back on packed homes and usable properties, this may be the avenue. So I guess, I don't want to put time to trade on you, but I just want to make sure that we're moving forward and get it to a point where we can do this.
So what would you like us to do?
Sam.
Well, since we're entering into a process, why don't we get an appraisal done on the property? That way we might have an actual idea what this thing is worth. I understand that all of you guys are very interested in getting this thing moved, this process moving, and so am I. I mean, I, I think that our first and foremost task sitting at this table is we represent the best interest of the people that we represent. And for me to sell a piece of real property without having an appraisal on it seems a little silly and it seems like a step that we should be taking. I mean, we had Mr. Wanzner come up at the last meeting and strongly suggests that we get an appraisal done on this building. Said there were similar properties that had been sold and an appraisal was a good idea. I, you know, am not a real estate guy. Mr. Wanzner's been in it for like ninety years. Sorry to cut you off, not that long.
So, so right now, we have a motion in regards establishing a minimum bid. So we either withdraw that or defeat it. And then if you want to make a motion for a first step to have an appraisal done and argue a cost for what that appraisal is going to be, I think that would be appropriate.
I just have one more comment on the reason I chose that price. And, and everyone knows why I like the outcry auction idea of it. Again, in Thorn Bay, what we did was that the places were appraised. And we took half of the appraised value as the minimum bid in the outcry auction. And I, I, I know what Terry said. I, I agree with appraisals, there's a place for them. I don't think this is the place in this particular building, this particular instance. But I, I, I just think that if we did get it appraised, it wouldn't appraise for double what was in my motion. And that was one of the reasons why I made that motion for that amount. And that's just what I think, based on what I've seen through title agencies. And I, we don't do a whole lot of commercials, so I, I could be wrong. I just think that that's an appropriate amount to start with. But we'll see.
Refresh my memory, what was the amount?
Where was?
What was the amount?
Six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred.
Oh, the motion from.
Yeah, you set that as a minimum bid. If we do that, then that's what the minimum bid is. For somebody, anybody that bid below that amount, we'd have to reject.
Right.
Unless we had a mechanism like what you talked about.
We've set the minimum in this motion. So we would, I believe, have to defeat this and come back with a plan for an outcry and use whatever number. We decide whether it's an appraisal or if we can make that motion up. Correct?
Yeah.
Dan.
So what if we amend the motion to say that the City Council establishes the value of the property at six hundred and fifty-five, seven thirty-three, took minimum bid off of it, and then we have an outcry auction?
We could do that also.
We could provide in whatever type of pack-up, packet that goes together, the information that we have from the Borough Assessment Office. But that simply is what it is. If it was a desk review based on their assessment for abnormal real property taxes, I don't believe that they, well, they didn't go there. I don't know if they're factoring in what appears to be some major upgrades or replacement or rehabilitation that Holy Works Director tells us got to be undertaken. And even the minimal amount of that is going to be substantial.
Well, in the document itself, it says this is five-one, two thousand and seven, EN. This property with a desk review only. And this is an attempt to, and no detail analyzed is performed. It's like you say, for tax purposes.
Right, and, and, and I'm not sure who all was here last time, but as you might recall, as the council was looking at auctions, is how they may get some kind of handle on what it may be worth. When the question was raised as to a tax assessment, I knew in a lot of times, in, in this case, the borough had not done that. But in talking with the borough attorney, he said, well, you know, I think the assessment departments would give you something. And at that point, I was hoping to have it in a couple of weeks. And so that's what you have before you with all those caveats, just so it's understood in case people missed the prior discussion or that little footnote. Yeah, I mean, they didn't go there. They're probably just applying the formula.
Lacy, have a suggestion?
I, I just thought maybe we should call upon the Public Works Director just to speak to the appraisal process and what, what additional information that might yield and what the cost and timeline for that is.
Yeah, sure. Mark Hilsen, Public Works Director, actually solicited a, a price proposal from Kim Wall for the commercial appraisal. That was under six thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact amount. And at the time, he said he could have it done in about thirty days.
Do we have a motion? Yeah.
Well, I was just, okay, I've been thinking about this now. And really, to put it out there to everyone nationwide, it, it might look better if we say the bidding will start at half the appraised value, five hundred and fifty thousand. I, maybe it would be a good idea to get it appraised. I don't like that price, six thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, but I understand because of the piece of property it is. Get it appraised and then decide from that appraisal. Because we don't have to go with, I wouldn't go with the appraisal. I would go half of it or whatever it is so that people know we didn't just come up with that number. I mean, I know it, we went to the assessor's office to get that number. But I'm thinking in my mind that half of the appraised value is going to be less than what we're looking at. And maybe that would be best.
Judy.
So you're familiar with outcry auctions, you say, that advertise at nationwide?
Uh huh.
What's the cost of that?
You put it in paper, whatever the ad in the paper is, you put it in public notices. It was minimal. This was, yeah. But the City of Thorn Bay, they did it. They made sure they did it during a snowstorm in the middle of winter so that the people that got to show up were residents so that the plan.
I have a question for Mr. Hilsen.
Mark.
I have a question for Mr. Hilsen. Is Mr. Wall local?
Not anymore. He's, he's south, so he'll be coming up here.
Does the six thousand dollars include airfare, lodging, pretty?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that's everything.
Right, yeah, get it all done.
So would you withdraw your motion or we'd have another one in regard to getting an assessment?
I will.
Second on second. Okay, those have been withdrawn. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we get a commercial real estate appraisal on the Old Fire Station.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please, second, Judy.
Your Honor, I'm related to Kim Wall. I'm saying that publicly, you should be very pleased.
All right, appreciate that. So, um, we have a, a motion, uh, we didn't define who is gonna do it, so I can pick up an issue at this particular point. He said that he's talked with somebody, but there may be more options for that, so, um, any other discussion? Please close them.
Is, so does Zingy have things as a relationship to?
Well, it would just mention that the individual was gonna do that, if we wanna use that.
He'll bring his contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think.
So he'll be back.
Yeah, it'll be back. And this is just general at this particular point?
Right, yeah, there's no problem there.
Yeah, so.
So, your motion is just of property price?
Yes.
Okay.
Move in second. No discussion, call them.
Who's?
Okay.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Alavoya. Yes. Thank you, guys. Um, that brings us to item seven, a three-single unit sales tax exemption, um, and there was , uh, information, um, and, uh, a motion. Take, and it's such action regarding the, is there a motion?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Will the City Council adopt the motion directing staff to take such action regarding the single unit sales tax exemption as determined appropriate by the City Council?
Set that. Move in second. Mark?
We've had discussions about this here, there has come up at least twice at Cooperative Relations, which meets sporadically. We've talked about options of raising, um, the sales tax cap seasonally, geographically, uh, by class of goods, um, with our counterparts at the Borough, there's been some interest, but, um, probably not a very strong consensus for any one particular option. Um, we sat here tonight, and I voted yes, and we just raised rates on locals. I would like some discussion and some consideration of raising the sales tax on class of goods that would be more heavily weighted to our friends, our million best friends that come every year to visit our shores. Um, this came up, and there are local merchants who sell, for example, jewelry, and they express their concerns, and I can understand them and I respect them, but remember that the sales tax is a pass-through, it doesn't cost the merchant a thing, okay? If we made it from one thousand to two thousand, it would be sixty-five dollars more on a two thousand dollar ring, watch, whatever. Um, I, I think, uh, as we go forward here with these tight budgets in the city and the Borough, I think we have to look a lot harder at visitors to our shores for additional sources of revenue.
Well, one of the issues I have, of course, is the fact that, uh, first thing, this would have to be an agreeable, uh, um, practice with the Borough also, because it would be too difficult to do it just one body. The other thing I, I do have some concerns about at this particular point in time is that, um, there's a discussion at the state level in regards to taxing internet sales. And if that were to come about, whatever the percentage was and ever how it's collected, and I believe that at AML, that next month, they're gonna have, I, a, a resolution, partially prepared for the legislature. And that would probably be without any tax gap. And so, um, the, the thing is, is, is with the way that the internet sales are now and all that kinda stuff, if we add an extra tax, even if it's just raising the, the, the tax cap, um, if it gets to a point where I'm gonna deal out of town, and it's just one more of those same, you know, for an item that's two thousand dollars, um, uh, I'm afraid that we're, we're not supporting our local businesses, uh, at this particular point in time. I don't know that that's gonna necessarily hold true in the future, but, um, when you're talking about, you know, a single transaction, and you're getting appliances or, or something like that, I'm just a little bit concerned, because we already have a problem now. So I, I, I'm not really in favor about moving this forward at this particular point in time. I know that we've had lots of discussions on it, um, I just don't think that we're there yet. Yes?
Mr. Mayor? Um, if you had the opportunity to look at the sales tax numbers from the different, um, categories, like, um, retail jewelry, um, seventy-three million, five hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars, I think that, um, I think that having a, a, a small rise in the tax, that we might capture some transient dollars and able to offset some of the other costs that all of us are paying. I mean, we're, we're all in agreement that, um, our infrastructure, our EMS, I mean, all of our system is completely used and not paid for by our visitors. I think, I think we're consensus about that. I, I agree with, with Mark about wanting to look at some, some ways to, to capture some of those dollars. So, um, I'm in favor of looking at this and coming up with a way to do that. I certainly, uh, agree with your comment about how we're brick and mortar stores that are disadvantaged because of, of the taxation, of the tax. There, there's no question about that. I don't think that Mr. Flora and myself have any intent to raise the tax on the stuff that we buy at the grocery store, or at the hardware store, or at, uh, with our goods and services. I think, uh, the idea is to capture some of the, the money that's coming through on the, on the boats. We have, you know, a, a lot more people coming, and I think we, we should be capturing some of that money, I don't think it's gonna set them back too much, and I like the idea, and I would be gonna move it forward, thank you.
Good.
Your Honor, so would, is this something that we would bring back to, um, Cooperative Relations?
I believe that's where the correct place to send it.
Yeah. When we're gonna have our first meeting?
As soon as I schedule it, Dave. The Borough's in charge.
Well, let's take over. Because they never talk to these guys.
I suppose I could call for a minute.
Yeah.
I, I don't have a problem doing that. So if we want to refer this to the Cooperative Relations meeting, is that, is that the amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what our action is.
Seems appropriate.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? And so it's just gonna start as a general discussion, and using some of the numbers that we have here, is that the, yeah? Okay. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Yes. Thank you very much, that moves us on to, and I will, uh, contact the Borough and, and see about getting a, a meeting schedule. Um, we are on item seven, A four, resolution number nineteen dash two-seven-two-three, amending the City Catch Can Compensation Plan to provide for the company, the classification of a project manager.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council approved resolution number nineteen twenty-seven twenty-three, amending the City of Catch Can Compensation Plan to provide for the classification of the position of project manager within the Public Works Department at salary grade seven dash sixty-one, and establishing an effective date.
Then move in second. Judy?
Your Honor?
Julie?
Based on a perceived, a possible perceived, um, conflict of interest, I'll abstain from discussion and vote on this subject.
Thank you. Judy?
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
Um, so Mark, this, this gentleman be working out of your office, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, um, just briefly, he, he's gonna be doing, this what the, uh, Mr. Brown did when we had the hospital project, right? Is he kind of the project manager for that?
Yes.
As an example? Would this person have the ability to work, uh, both in general government projects as well as KPU projects?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, I guess that would be my concern, because we have a guy with especially, especially in buildings or something like that. Uh, I'd like to utilize him across the board, so, um, we have clear, consistent, uh, practices that all the contractors can inspect when we do our project. That you can, or I have. Okay. Um, Lacy, you have anything?
I don't, I don't have anything at this moment, Your Honor. Um, thank you for the questions that you asked, um, regarding this position, but just to, to clarify, um, Mark as the, um, department head has the authority to assign work, um, to this position and other individuals, and there is a history of Public Works performing, Public Works Department performing work for KPU on a discretionary and specialty basis. So, um, with regard to this new position, there's nothing to preclude that person from, um, doing work that would be suitable for KPU.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have some general questions.
Yes.
So how would this person differentiate between a project inspector? Was, is the manager gonna go out and take a look at stuff in the field, or is this strictly a hands-off?
No, it, it, this position would be envisioned to spend quite a bit of time in the field, um, verifying that the work is in accordance with the specifications and the design, so it's not a desk job.
So the person's gonna have some horsepower, see some things wrong, they can stop the project.
Correct, right.
I'm ready to roll.
Anybody else? Terry, then please call the roll.
Who's?
Yep.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Brings us down to item eight, vouchers, which we have none, brings us to item nine, management report. Lacy?
Um, I do have a few things, Mayor Seabritson. Firstly, uh, the first executive session item regarding potential hospital litigation, um, there's no need for that at this time.
Okay.
Shucks, yes. Uh, we'll probably move that and be ready, um, to present that at the, um, first meeting in February, the February seventh meeting. Second, oh, pardon me, second meeting in February, so that'll be the, the twenty-first. Um, a little bit more buffer. Um, I hope the council noticed the, um, great lighting that is now on the backside of City Hall and around, um, the police station, it's much brighter, safer, um, oddly enough, the Redmond Hall did a cer- a, a similar move at the exact same time, so there's great lighting now shining in the lot across the street, so thanks to Public Works and Building Maintenance for working with the contractor on that. Um, the radar speed signs that, um, we have been installing, um, at the new push-button actuated crosswalks, um, at the hospital and at Deer Mountain Tatsudas, there's now one up at, um, the crosswalk at Deer Mountain Tatsudas, it's working really well, and Public Works is working on, um, getting the one at the hospital, um, installed. Correct, Mark?
Yeah, it's, it's actually located, uh, directly in front of the, um, Streets Building, so the, the warehouse there, the Public Works Warehouse would be the other one for coming southbound.
And that's, that's where the speed reduction sign is, is right in that area?
It's right in that area, more importantly, it's, it's just in advance of where Vigor crosses. A lot of pedestrians move across the road right there.
So, Mark, where are you placing the one on, or have placed the one on Stedman?
So, Stedman was, um, just, just down from, uh, it, it's near the, the speed limit change as well.
Okay.
Just northbound, north of the coffee shop there.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
It's been very effective, I've been observing it, um, it has been decreasing speeds quite a bit.
And the only comment I have about the crosswalk is, uh, we need something on the backside of it, the bright strobe that you see when you're going too fast on one of those signs, not that I've ever seen it.
Heard about.
Heard about. Uh, really get your attention, really get your attention, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, when, when we had, uh, the Christmas Eve ring around the, the hospital, I sat up in the parking garage and looked down at that thing, and, and people weren't using it when they were coming across, and when they did push it, people weren't stopping, because I think it just blended in with everything too much.
So we're, there's a couple of things going on. We are going to be putting a pedestrian sign on the back of the other signs, so there'll be two signs pointing in each direction, so we're hoping that helps. Um, we're also helping to get, um, some help from, um, Kim Simpson to do a little public service announcement to kinda make people aware of, A, you know, mind the sign, and B, push the button.
Yeah.
And so just kinda get the word out. Well, we noticed that the hospital was, at first, people didn't push it, then it's caught on, other people saw it, and now that, that one gets pushed quite a bit. And, and watching Deer Mod, not so much, there's people that aren't used to it yet. So we're hoping to get the word out, get people pushing the button. We're gonna revise the sign that says push the button a little bit, and we're also looking at maybe a little less sleek button. The button's very, very vandal-proof, very sleek, it almost blends in too much.
So, when we have new stop signs go up someplace, we use red flags on them. Maybe we put something like that, a ribbon that waves around to get people's attention that there's something there, I, I don't.
Yeah.
But I, that's what I saw, the people, uh, and of course, hopefully they have caught onto it, but they, they walked up, they saw the sign, they saw the crosswalk, and then they just go across the block.
Right, yeah, I, I've seen that, too, and fortunately, it's getting, my, my impression of it is, it's getting better at the hospital, but we, we need to, we need to get the word out, we need to, to do more.
Good, good.
We do anything with the lighting at Stedman Street? The lighting in theirs are kind of bad.
So, yeah, so that's a part of a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant application that the DOT made for that intersection. So, that's federal highway funds, and it's awarded on a competitive basis, but that would allow a comprehensive look, uh, by safety engineers, and potentially, if awarded, fund a comprehensive redo of the intersection, including lighting. Um, there are some other things there that, that I think, uh, would make a lot of common sense, uh, to kinda improve the safety there, lighting being one of them.
There's a lot of pedestrian traffic there.
A lot.
And then the, the lighting is bad, people are speeding there, I'm near the street, see a lot.
Yep.
And the, the speed limit sign, eyes slow down for this.
Did you? Good.
Yeah, yeah, going too bad.
Yeah.
So those are a great idea.
Lacy? Good to you.
Okay, just a few more items, um, also sort of on the Public Works side, as Carl mentioned at the last meeting, um, there'll be some manhole work that will be performed on Front Street. Um, right now, Public Works is looking at that taking place the last, um, week of this month, so perhaps beginning the twenty-eighth. Hopefully, it will last no more than three days. Um, this will require a pretty major traffic, um, revision, and in fact, uh, people will be able to drive up Dock Street. Um, it'll be clearly marked, um, we'll have, uh, folks at the scene to help direct traffic as needed, we'll put out lots of PSA as well in advance, um, but again, just a reminder that that is coming up. Um, I'm hoping that the council saw an email from me to Trey Actison, CEO of SEPA, from earlier today, um, regarding a major shift in the operations plan for, um, KPU generation. Uh, this next week will be on hydro, um, to perform some, um, long deferred and other maintenance tasks, and then we will be assisting the northern communities, um, in banking some water, um, to divert north, um, as they are, um, in a similar, if not worse, situation with regard to the ability to generate, um, for their communities. Um, and with regard to that as well, um, the council is aware we've had, um, some, uh, cats in a box, rental cat, uh, backup diesel generation, we informed you that one of them had to be returned because of some exhaust issues. The re- replacement, um, generator is on its way back, so that's good news in, in the situation as we continue to have, uh, dry and now cold weather.
So, Lacy, what is the present condition of the, and what's, what's operating in Bailey?
What is operating in Bailey? I believe today, and Andy can certainly answer this, I believe bag three and bag four is on, in Bailey, but Andy, please, expound.
The use of cell phones are prohibited, but I have a special application that tells me exactly what you just asked. So I hit the button here and it tells me currently we have four on, three on, and two on. Okay, just to let you know, last night about nine o'clock, I got a call. The place filled with fumes. I ordered bag three off and I ordered the pointy again cats on and we, we spooled up all the local generation we could to make up the difference from bag three. It had an exhaust leak and a, and a injector leak that was repaired last night, middle of the night, put back on by morning. And so the crew got that done. So congratulate the crew for doing that. And so that's what we're doing, right? So tomorrow night now, we're going to, we're gonna tell you what, we're, we're gonna end the diesel campaign in the last shift, which we call the swing shift. So sometime nine, ten o'clock, we'll feather off all the diesels. We'll spin up Swan Lake. We'll go on to Swan Lake. And then for everybody's information, we plan to be on Swan, that'll supply our firm power requirement along with our own hydro through Monday, Tuesday. And then we'll see how much of our work got done. And if we got enough of it done, then Wednesday starting eight o'clock, we'll go back on, on, on diesel to see what we can do to, to mitigate this, this, this issue that we have, right? So, and we all understand that somewhere's around six gigawatts. Everybody knows what six gigawatts is? Let me tell you what six gigawatts is. Give you an idea. So you know we have two swan units, right? Each one maxed out, wide open, low lake level, produce ten megawatts each. So wide open, low lake, we can get twenty megawatts total out of Swan Lake. If we did that for one hour, that would be twenty megawatt hours. They want six gigawatt hours. So multiply that by three hundred and, and you'll get that number. So how many days is that? That's about twelve and a half days of dedicated swan, wide open, for twelve and a half days. So the question is, I mean, when we came into this, there's a certain compassion we have for the northern communities. I certainly have it. But is this credible? The other thing that I didn't hear or don't know is what period of time do we have to produce this? So it's going to be incredible for us. But we're gonna, we're gonna get at it and see what we can do.
You're, you're sending that power north here?
Well, okay, so sending that power north can be done a number of ways. The way SEPA wanted to do it was for us to use Swan Lake as the buffer, put the, put the energy in Swan Lake by raising the level. And then Swan Lake generation can put it north. If that's possible.
I thought it was supposed to work the other way.
Well, it could work a number of ways.
It did work the other way for considerable amount of time.
Right. So, so they, they, they decided that they, they perhaps oversold Tai by six mega, six gigawatt hours. So that's, that's what the, that's what the issue is, right? Just so everybody knows, it's, it's quite an endeavor. So we'll see what we can do. And we'll get at it starting Wednesday. How's that?
Sounds good. Good game. Put out the hat.
That is all.
All right. Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Future agenda items. Brings us to mayor and councilwoman, Nick.
Yeah, just one. I ran into a person in the story of the day and he was talking to me about this street. I guess it's Jefferson coming in toward the mall, this to the waterside. I think it's got a steel plate over it right now. And his comment was that at some point in time between the city and I don't, I don't know what all the property owners are, the state, the city, and whoever that is, that road really needs to be fixed right. Because he says that he thinks that water's going underneath and it keeps sinking hole in it. So I just wanted to bring it to our attention that it probably needs to be fixed right at one time and it's from a number of people's comment. And I have to say, I don't know who owns it, so.
Yeah, the, happy to say the state owns that.
Good luck.
And I will add that, that Public Works provided a pretty critical assist when that sinkhole opened up. And those are the city's plates that are on the road right now. DOT was very grateful to have our help. It has brought into sharp focus, pretty big problem in that area that we're beginning to look into more. But I believe with that Tongus Avenue rehabilitation project, they would be looking at that part of Jefferson.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Pam?
I've been reading the news about our new governor and the economics and what the plan is for the state going forward. None of it sounds very good for revenue sharing and municipalities and getting roads fixed and so on and so forth. So I think the conversation that councilmember Mark and I had earlier about moving out some other revenue options is a good one. And I think it's gonna be needed. It's not looking good. We're talking about cutting the budget by a billion and a half dollars. I didn't know that we had a billion and a half dollars room to cut that budget. So I think that's, that's gonna be a concern. And the other one was, you guys may have noticed that I wasn't here January third. I was in Palm Springs, California. And in Palm Springs, everywhere, they've got these great big things with propellers that turn around and around and around. I think they call those windmills for power generation. They're everywhere. So I was wondering, why do we don't ever look at at least one or two of those around here? I mean, the, the, the rain may quit falling, but the wind seems to blow all the time. So I think that we need to start looking at some other, not, you know, hydro is extremely expensive to develop. But I think a wind turbine was, is, is, might be a good idea. And I hope that we can bring that up and see if it has any merit at all. Thank you.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mark?
So I had a couple of folks over the last few weeks come and speak to me about the condition of Tongus and what the heck is the city gonna do about it. And I had to remind them it's a state road. And then I explained to them the awesome plan the state had for bike lanes, island refugees. Oh, and let's take one of the lanes out. Needless to say, there wasn't one local person who could wrap their head around it and find an improvement with that. So I hope staff will continue to correspond, will continue to correspond with the state and remind them that this is not egged. And all we want is some well lit crosswalks and some good pavement. And they can keep the bike lanes. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mark. So to answer a couple of those questions, is we did have a conversation with our state senator and our, and our representative specifically about moving forward with Tongus Avenue. And DOT had the new address now, I believe. And so there will be conversations I have, I think had in the future about how that process progresses. And hopefully we're gonna get some response back from them in regards to our comments. And as a couple of Bergeron folks, you know, wind is an interesting factor for power. I think there are some mettler towers being deployed, trying to gather that wind data. Just because it's, because it's windy doesn't mean it's always good for wind generation. So, and it, it doesn't maybe be a firm power. You could, when it's blowing just right, then you get power, but if it drops, then you gotta have something else to pick it up, right? So there's a lot of moving parts in that. But I think it's worthwhile to consider and, and hopefully we can get some of that. I think Godec did it very well with their, and integrated everything into the system. So that, that, that could be a potential. And in regards to what we're doing at Bailey and, and Swan and, and with the northern communities, we had a, a very good meeting with SEPA in regards to the, the issue. This is, this year's been an anomaly. We definitely went all the territory for everybody. The reality is, is we've taken thirty three thousand gigawatts from Tai, is that right?
Thirty-two.
Thirty, yeah. And so we got that all for six point eight cents. And they're, they're gambling on what the weather's gonna do. So the dedicated resource language and what's in those reservoirs and what's available for each community is, is what drives it. So the, the intent, and it changed real quickly because Petersburg and Wrangell got concerned about the level of lake. They have thirty-one days in the lake. And so they wanted to have fifteen of that as actual dedicated. So potentially, there's only fifteen days of available water. So the reality is, they probably did oversell some of their water to Ketchikan. So there's an obligation there to, to try to get some of that back. And so there's a plan to try to do that.
Can't we just buy them some diesel?
Well, the problem is, whenever the stranded asset and those, those issues went into place, Wrangell, Petersburg should never be able to untie you out of water. There's just not enough demand there. So they have a dedicated resource. And if we impact that by taking too much water out of it, we're somewhat responsible to get some.
Sure.
And, and there's a real, right now, there's a, a good relationship because they said, well, if you guys end up with a problem with this adder, yeah, they can, we'll run our diesel ship out or do different things. So there's good community cooperation, cooperation on the board right now. So it's really good. And that's all I have. So it's been, it's been very good. So I think that brings us down to executive sessions. We don't need one in regards to the center expansion project. So I bring this down to the twos, the requests for the executive session for the appointment of the clerk. Do you have a motion? Your Honor. Go ahead.
I move the city council going to executive session, session in accordance with Ketchikan municipal code two oh four oh two five A two for the purpose of discussing the appointment of Kim L. Stanker to the position of city clerk and to discuss contract terms as determined appropriate, which may involve discussion, discussion of subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you want public discussion?
Yeah.
What did you thought of that? Please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yep.
Zini?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
All right. Then we will reach that into executive. See back in.
Your Honor.
All right. We'll come into the executive session.
Your Honor.
Yeah.
I move the city council appoint Kim L. Stanker as city clerk and approve such contract terms as are determined and amended by the city council.
Second. Moving second. Any discussion? Here you go, please call the roll.
Yes.
Zini?
Yeah.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Yeah, motion happened. Do you know what the next one is? Move the jury since.
I told you.
The court right hand right there is so moved.
So moved.
Move the jury. Thank you, Your Honor.
Motion to per severe, Your Honor.